Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilman Perry as temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules.
Second. On the question, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and so moved. Does any of the councilmen have announcements today?
Yes, I have one. The Norts Grant Neighborhood Association Watch will have their annual fundraiser which benefits the community throughout the year. It's called Oktoberfest. It's going to be held October 6th, 2018, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Polish Club, 1817 Brick Ave. Tickets are $15. They include food, drink, and entertainment. There will be basket raffles and a 50/50. Thank you.
Any other announcements?
I have one. Lackawanna County has announced a tire recycling event beginning this Wednesday, September 26th through Saturday, 29th. Tires will be accepted at the recycling center, 400 Boulevard Avenue, Wednesday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. You may also recycle at Scranton DPW's headquarters, which is at 101 West Poplar Street, on Thursday and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to noon. There's a small fee of $2 to $10, depending on the condition, size, and weight of the tire. Also, next Monday, October 1st, at 4:30 p.m. in the Governor's Room, we'll have a public work session with Arcadis for a general stormwater analysis update. Then, following, at 5:45, there'll be a public hearing for item 5B on tonight's agenda, which is the liquor license transfer.
Third order, 3A, Controller's Report for month ending August 31, 2018.
If not received and filed.
3B, Tax Assessors Reports, four hearing dates to be held October 3 and October 10, 2018.
Are there any questions? If not received and filed.
3C, Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held August 15, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3D, Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Special Meeting Held August 29, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3E, Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting Held August 15, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3F, Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting Held August 15, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3G, Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting Held September 19, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3H, Tax Assessors Results Report, four hearing date held September 12, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
Fourth order, Citizens' Participation.
Our first speaker on the signing sheet tonight is Ron Elman.
You're batting lead up.
I hate to go first because everybody's all alert.
Mr. Elman, if you would just state your name, please.
Later on, when everybody's doodling and drinking water, that's when I do my best. All these foreclosures that we've been talking about really sadden me. But every year, the foreclosures and the abandoned properties just cause the same problem next year. There doesn't seem to be any solution to it. I've talked to, I don't know, three, four, or five people over the years that have lost their property, and it's just like an endless circle. And our inept mayor, he's allowed his friends and supporters just to go year after year, deliberately avoiding paying their obligations. There's no excuse. Last, two or three weeks ago, when I was up here, I had 70-something names of LLCs and developers on that envelope that owed taxes for the past four, five years. Finally, in Friday's paper, one name was on there. What about dozens of them ought to be on there? Look at Jefferson across the street. That building is rented, and he refuses to pay taxes, $106,000. There's only one other property in the city that owes more, and that's the Greenwich Manor and Sanderson. They won't pay $107,000 taxes. It's not right for the rest of us to have to carry these parasites year after year. We don't have nothing to look forward to but a burden of higher taxes coming with the school problems and the reassessment problems. It's going to get worse, not better. You know, Cartwright has deliberately allowed Scranton to become a sanctuary for these, I don't know, these despicable tax cheats, I guess. He not only lovingly protects them, he's even employing two of them. Matt Cartwright ought to really be, he ought to just fit right in here when he comes home if he loses, which I wouldn't vote for him. I don't see anything in Scranton that he's done, or Casey. All he does is there because of his father. I don't know, of course, how many of you know that Judge Kavanaugh's mother was a judge the whole time he was growing up? And 20-something years ago, she sat on a case, the bank versus Dr. Ford's foreclosure on their home. This is a fact. You're going to sit there, anybody, and tell me that won't leave somebody vengeful or leave a sour taste in their mouth? Liquor has touched my lips before, if you don't believe it or not. And I guarantee you, you don't have a memory 36 years later of a happening. There's things that have done last week I can't remember anymore. And lastly, I don't understand the money last week going for a GPS to know where the street signs are. We know where the street signs are. Why isn't the money going for new street signs? Somebody, what do we need to know their location for?
We're paying-
You're talking about, what, $200,000 and some thousand dollars? It's just a waste of money. I've heard three or four people say they can't, they don't see any reason for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Next speaker, Joan Hodewanitz.
Joan Hodewanitz, city resident and taxpayer. Are we still on track for the audit at the end of next week?
As far as I know, nothing has changed, so I think we are, yes.
Okay, that's good, because as of today, it's 116 days late. I saw in the August Controller's Report that we paid SB and Company $23,000 and Rainey and Rainey $5,590, so it should be coming to a conclusion. Are we still going to keep Rainey and Rainey on retainer to help with auto prep every year till hell freezes over?
I'm not sure what the plans are, but I think that's the plan-
Because I tell you right now, I'd have to go back into old council meetings to see when we last renewed that contract, but after four years, the people in the Business Administration Office should know how to prep for an audit. I know when you transition between administrations, there's a loss of institutional knowledge, but we're now in the fifth year, if my math is correct on kind of my fingers.
Well, I know the time spent by Rainey and Rainey gets less and less every year. I know that, as you can tell by the billables.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, it shouldn't take that many years. I remember the first year we passed it, and we were talking about, originally, they wanted four years, and we cut it back to two years and said they should know what they're doing after two years, but we're in the fifth year. That's got to end sooner or later. Did I hear correctly that the work session for the Arcadis report is going to be October 1st at 4:00 p.m.?
4:30.
4:30, okay. That's what I thought. That's what happened on my calendar, 4:30 in the Governor's Room. I think that anyone in the city who has the time, who is impacted by stormwater runoff, ought to come down and hear what is said. I understand it's a work session, and public is not going to be asking questions, but I think that if you're negatively impacted by stormwater runoff, maybe you should start looking into what's going on with the Arcadis study. And then, if you can stay for the follow-on council meeting, then you can ask some pointed questions. I know that more than one family is going to be financially ruined by stormwater runoff. I've seen it happen. My parents had to deal with the issue. It was very expensive for us, and I know what it's like when you have a problem and you don't get any help from the local government. My parents lost their home in 1963 to a mine cave, so I've done that dance before. Will there eventually be a written report, which the public will have access to, on the findings of this Arcadis study?
Absolutely. In fact, I think there's going to be an actual workshop when we have a final draft for the public to be part of. I'm not sure if you're going to be able to time it, but there'll be a workshop.
But there'll be a written report?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And it'll hopefully go on the city's website, so that the public can access it.
If we can, sure.
They're only a year late, but that's neither here nor there. But we have no idea when we're going to get that written report.
I thought they mentioned a December timeframe, but, you know, don't hold it back.
At this point, they've told us so many dates that I'm just glad to sit down in a room with them, and hopefully we can get something more solid there.
Right, exactly.
Because, I mean, they're just giving us a date, and it's just numbers to me at this point until I actually hear from them.
So, we'll be, exactly, we'll be able to pin some of that down next week.
But like I said, anybody negatively impacted by stormwater should think about coming. And last but not least, there's going to be an original art by Austin Burke Auction in support of the Albright Memorial Library on October 11th. Preview at 6:00 p.m., the auction at 7:00. Tickets are $20. That includes the program and refreshments. And you can go get tickets online at www.albright.org, or go up to the library and get them, but it's a good fundraiser for the Albright Memorial Library, and I have a copy for each one of you, which I'll leave with Catherine. And I hope you all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodewanitz. Next speaker, Marie Schumacher.
Marie Schumacher, I would request that the Arcadis meeting be held in chambers. Just because public can't speak is no reason to not have it here. That's an awkward time for working people, and there are a lot of working people who worked all night long to bail their basements and other things, so I think it'd be nice if they could be accommodated and at least listen. The budget for this year stated in the highlights, "The Department of Environmental Protection Refuge/Recycling Evaluation Should Be Completed in the First Quarter of 2018 and Will Provide Optionality in Reviewing the Practicality of a Pay As You Throw or Hybrid Program Concept." Now, I have filed the right to know to come and review that, but can somebody during motions, please, tell me what the bottom line was on that report? Mr. Donahue, last week, you said that you had visited the 70th block of Wyoming Avenue and taken pictures during motions. Could you tell me what the, when you met with the city engineer, what he said about the stability of the way Ryerson is tilting?
I was told that it's structurally sound.
Okay, thank you. That's about on line. Okay, thank you. It's good to know. Now, on 3B, can you tell me how much, on that, I'm sure you've all looked at that, one of the persons or entities that is asking for a reduction in their taxation is Electric City Parking. Now, the sad part of it is that the column, which still says "proposed/current and assessed value," used to give the assessed value and then what the person was asking for. Unfortunately, it's not in here, but, and then, of course, what they get. But I would like to know, and I think every taxpayer would like to know, how much of a reduction they want, and I would like to know who is going to go represent this taxing body on that, and several others perhaps that are on there, but certainly on that. It's not until the 10th of October, so maybe next week, one of you could tell us what they are requesting as a reduction. That would be helpful. Next, the, whoops, I didn't mark. It's the one on the brownfields. The last, whereas, prior to therefore, in that backup states, that whereas the city of Scranton will provide the necessary grant matching funds through our accounts to support the remediation project. Now, I understand that's about $80,000. Where is that going to be funded? Has a grant been received, or is that going to come out of the operating budget?
The county is the one that's applying for that grant.
Yeah, but this is matching funds. We have to, that's what it says. Whereas, the city of Scranton will provide the necessary grant matching funds.
My understanding was they were using the purchase as their portion of the matching funds, but we'll find out for it.
Okay, thank you. And speaking, well, I'll continue. Do we know, Mr. Gahn, are you going to be able to share with us tonight what happened between the meeting with Gene from Kaiser Valley and whoever else may have attended, and the city engineer? I'd like an update on that, if you have it. And then, in, just for the, just for the sake of transparency, you know, we go through a lot of items that are pass-throughs through the city for various grants. I think that you need to start adding to three, the third order, when a grant is actually given, so we know where it is going and what they're for interested enough to find out how it's being spent out, and that we have it. Same with the reports. When the Arcadis study comes in, that should be there. When the audit comes in, that should be there. I think that needs to be expanded. Okay, and I would just like to call to any people, the attention. The National Taxpayers' Union, if I may-
Sure.
-has a wonderful guide. Now, I've had this for a while. It was 895 at the time I procured mine, but "How to Fight Property Taxes: A Homeowner's Guide to Appealing an Unfair Property Tax Assessment." So, I would encourage anybody that feels their assessment is unfair to contact the National Taxpayers' Union in Washington and get this. It's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Lee Morgan.
Good evening, counsel. You know, listening to the first speaker, Ron Elman, speak, he stated that he thought that the people that weren't paying their taxes were parasites. And even though it's troubling that people don't pay their taxes, when you understand really what a parasite is, you'd have to acknowledge that here, the government itself is a parasite. It's sucking the life out of every resident in this city, and it just never stops. And, you know, we do all these studies, but I've never heard the city say they're going to go out and find out how many structures have been abandoned by their owners, how many structures are vacant. I think it'd be really an eye-opening experience for Scranton's elected officials to actually do something like that. You know, they're very good at spinning despair through this city, and it just never stops. And the people that are connected, they get grant money, they get favors, things are done for them. A lot of the things that we don't really see. And then, the average taxpayers come in here and ask for some remedial action by government, even if they're obligated by law to do what they're begging to have it done, or they're proceeding into court to try to get action. And that's just not the way government should really function, even though in Scranton, it's an everyday occurrence. Now, the city of Scranton sold the Southside Sports Complex to the University of Scranton, and I think every resident understands that in this city, or a vast majority may. But the Scranton Redevelopment Authority is obligated to build another ball field to take place, the place of the Southside Sports Complex. And the question I have for this council is, when is that ball field going to be constructed? You know, the other troubling thing, and I don't really expect to ever get an answer because council never has any answers to any questions that are asked, so I don't ever think I will receive a response to that. But I think that the residents of this city have to realize that the real problem in this city is our government. Now, I asked previously for the council members and the mayor, I thought it'd be a good idea for them to state on the city's webpage the work they've performed in the following week for the residents of this city. And I don't know if that's taken place yet, but it should. You know, it's just, you take a look at the city with the community grant money. We're going to go up to the Novembreno, and we're going to build utter silliness up there. The pool over on Capous Avenue is still closed. Now, when Ozzy Quinn was alive, he had somebody that offered to go over to both of those complexes and make repairs to them and put them back up, even though it was assumed that a lot of the plumbing had been stripped out and sold. I mean, let's not forget that the cages at Naught Park disappeared, and I don't, the council never admitted or said what happened to that metal that the cages were constructed out of. But, you know, it's really important for the residents of this city to realize that this city is not in better shape than when it went under Act 47. It's all silliness. It's all the mismanagement, the burden's been allegedly shifted. It's like, it's like doing tricks, sleight of hand. But the reality is that the average resident understands when they pay their 2.4% wage tax to the city that this city's not in better shape. When they get their real estate bills, they realize that. And it's just thoroughly amazing that everybody wants to run for a higher office, and they can't perform the duties which they were elected to. And then, we keep all these authorities going, but they offer no benefit to the average Scrantonian. They're just a borrowing instrument, a way to pile on more debt on the residents that are already severely overburdened. And when you take a look at the Scranton School District, when the Auditor General came in here and looked, he knew how much of a nightmare it was, but the state of Pennsylvania did not want to step into that. They really should have put that district in receivership and came in and took control of it. But they know the nightmare that's sitting there waiting, so what did they do? They sidestepped it and left the residents take the brunt of the abuse they're going to take in rising taxes. Good luck, residents.
Thank you. That's all the names on the signing sheet. Is there anybody else that would like to address council tonight?
Fifth order, 5A, motions.
Mr. Donahue, any comments or motions tonight?
Yes. Just on something Marie broke up. Back in June, after Marie discovered that the Electric City Tax Garage classification had not been changed to taxable from tax-exempt, I did send a letter to the county Deputy Director of Assessments asking the following questions. Why was the Electric City Garage's tax classification never changed from exempt to taxable? Has a countywide review of all tax-exempt properties ever been performed to ensure they meet the requirements of a tax-exempt classification? And what, if anything, is being done to recoup taxes that were not paid on the property for 2016 and 2017? I've still not yet received a response. So, Mrs. Reed, would you be able to send a follow-up letter to Mr. Foley, posing those questions again? And could you also copy each commissioner on that? I also attended Southside Neighborhood Meeting last week, so I'll be forwarding along their concerns to the proper departments. This afternoon, I received a petition to revoke appeal outdoor patio at Jojo's at the Donkey from residents of the plot, so I'll be passing that along. I gave copies to my colleagues, and I'll also be forwarding it to the administration. And lastly, with regard to Mr. Hinton's proposed coffee shop at Naught Park, the mayor still hasn't weighed in or stated his position on the issue. I think the citizens of this city deserve to know what the mayor's position on this issue is, so I would like to make a motion for council to send a letter to the mayor asking what his position is in regards to Mr. Hinton's lease of city-owned property. For the purposes of operating a coffee shop while also continuing to serve as Director of Licensing and Inspection, does he believe this is ethical, and will he allow this to happen?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second on the question?
Yes, on the question. I agree with Councilman Donahue's motion for several reasons. First of all, you know, we've asked for the mayor, you know, what the mayor thinks about this. Don't forget, this is the mayor's employee. He is not covered under a collective bargaining agreement. I approached the mayor about the situation about a month and a half ago, and he told me it was a personnel issue, just like he's given the same answer to the local media, which is ridiculous. It's time for the mayor to stop evading his responsibility as an elected official and give an answer. Is he going to let this happen under his watch? A city employee running a coffee shop out of a public building at a public park, which I find ridiculous. Also, on top of that, I had sent a letter to Mr. Hinton, who said he wants to be open and transparent about this process, August 13th, and then again on September 5th, asking several questions, additional questions about the lease with the Recreation Authority. Still have not received a response. So, if the mayor and Pat Hinton would stop hiding and give answers and be transparent, as they said they would be, and if the mayor could come forward and give a statement to this council about his opinion, if he's going to let this happen, and if he agrees with it, and where he has been over the past few years with an announcement that this was going to take place, I would appreciate it, and I think my colleagues would appreciate it. And if he continues to ignore this council, I think it is a dereliction of duty. He sends legislation down from the Law Department every week that he expects his council to vote on, yet when we ask him a very, very simple question, you can hear a pin drop. He doesn't respond. So, it's time for the mayor to come forward, give us an answer. If he agrees with it, I don't agree with it, but that's fine. But give us an answer. Thank you.
Yeah, on the question, we did discuss this, not the motion, but the coffee shop idea several weeks ago, and, you know, I was on the record where I don't believe it. It doesn't pass the eye test, but it is, as of right now- It doesn't pass the eye test. But it is, as of right now, all done legally. But I'd be in favor of sending a letter to the mayor and asking his opinion on it as well. We've all weighed in on our opinion on it, so I would only think it would be fair for his as well, and we can see where it goes from there.
I might as well weigh in. As I've stated before, I was extremely disappointed the mayor allowed this to get this far. So I think it's certainly appropriate to send a letter and get his opinion on the matter once and for all.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, thank you. Earlier this year, I discussed the importance of the arts to our city. At that time, I stated that I have the utmost respect for the creative class and that we all should appreciate the talents and sacrifices of those that make the arts their calling. This week, the 2018 Scranton Fringe Festival begins. There will be more than two dozen events spread across at least 10 downtown venues. I personally have scheduled at least eight shows on my calendar, and I'm looking forward to some very enjoyable experiences. The diverse lineup contains everything from children's programming to comedy and improv to some shows with maybe a more mature content. And yes, there will be some shows that will address some timely and maybe controversial issues, but isn't that what the arts are all about? Sometimes stretching the boundaries, sometimes not, sometimes just entertaining. And at all times, we'd want our art to be thought-provoking. But to me, ultimately, it's about the freedom for all artists, those that paint, those that act, those that dance, those that play music, to express themselves through art, and the freedom for the rest of us to decide if we enjoy that expression. As elected officials, we should always strive to rebuff any attempts to stifle, control, and minimize the arts. And of course, then there is the monetary side of the arts. From a purely economic standpoint, embracing the arts just happens to be good business. For a city like ours, the arts creates excitement, commerce, and creativity. So with that said, if you can, please check out the 2018 Scranton Fringe Festival in downtown Scranton, running through September 30th. And remember, on-street parking in downtown Scranton is free after 5:00 PM daily and all day and night on Saturday and Sunday. So I'm just saying about that. Some may know that I've been attending the meetings as part of the blight task force over the last several months, so I would expect some very sound and progressive ideas and suggestions to come out of that task force over the next few months. It will be up to this council to lead on this issue through new and revised legislation. As I've stated many times, in the fight against blight, the status quo simply is not working, and it's time for new ways to address the negative impact of blight on our city. Some other news, there will be a meeting on October 9th with the Sapa Community Officials and Steering Committee members to discuss the RFPs for the consultant to undertake zoning ordinances for all of the Sapa communities. At that meeting, the group will decide which consultant should move to the interview process. City Planner Don King has been our designated committee member. Business Administrator Dablezonia and myself also have regularly attended Sapa meetings and have been part of this process. And that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahan, any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I agree with Mrs. Schumacher on one point that she made, and that's next week at 4:30 with the Arcadis Group coming in regarding stormwater. And the meeting is supposedly being held in the Governor's Room. You know, I just actually spoke to a gentleman today, after I got out of work, about the stormwater issues that he's having on his property. And I told him that this group would be coming in and we'd be getting an update. Unfortunately, he can't make it down here. So I do think, I don't see a reason why Arcadis couldn't come and just give their presentation in council chambers with the cameras rolling, because people do watch these meetings, they do pay attention. And this is a major issue that has come up time and time again since I've been on council in the last five years. So I would hope that my colleagues would agree to have this meeting in council chambers, not in the Governor's Room, for a number of different reasons. As I just mentioned, number one, more accessible when it's on television. Number two, quite frankly, it is hard to hear. It's hard for the public who attends to hear anything that goes on in that room because of the acoustics. So I would hope that my colleagues would agree to have that meeting in council chambers and ask ECTV to publicize that because of the importance of the meeting.
Excuse me. I don't like to interrupt motions, but I want to comment on that. Originally, the thought process was there may be an opportunity that one of the members wouldn't be able to come, and we have the ability to do a conference call in the Governor's Room that we don't have here. So if everybody is in attendance next week and that's not going to play out, we'll certainly ask them. But that was the plan, to go in the Governor's Room just in case we had the opportunity to use the phone or the conference facilities.
The 300 and 400 blocks of Leggett Street in North Scranton, Mrs. Reed and I have been in contact with the Pennsylvania American Water Company about sewage backup, especially discharge when there is a large rainstorm. So I want to thank the Pennsylvania American Water Company. They did go out, they cleaned up both blocks and the sewage that was in people's backyards. And they did send us a letter, and I just want to read a portion of it because this will affect residents in this area. Currently, Pennsylvania American Water Company has received all of the regulatory permits necessary to upgrade the sewer system from Leggett Street near the intersection with Leggett's Creek in North Scranton to Well Street near the intersection of the Lackawanna River. The project has an approximate cost of $1.5 million and is scheduled to begin construction in November of this year, with an anticipated completion date of August 2019. The project will include the replacement and upsizing of more than 5,000 feet of sewer pipe, which, once complete, will prevent future manhole surcharging issues in this area. So by August 2019, that problem hopefully will be rectified. So I appreciate the response from Mr. Hall from the Water Company. Also, we did get the 2018 Fall Paving List from DPW that will be administered by our Office of Economic and Community Development. So there's a few streets in West Side, South Side, and the Hill Section. In West Side, we have Washburn Street, Sloan Street, Parrott Ave., and Fellow Street, sections of those areas. South Side, we have Cedar Avenue from Davis Street to the city line, the 1200 block of Donnelly Court. In the Hill Section, we have Kressler Court, 400 block of Mayhand Court, and Wolf Court, 500 and 600 block, the Forest Court, and Moore Court between Ash Street and Myrtle Street. So that should be taking place soon. Also, we got a response after the public caucus with OECD last week. We got a response from Mrs. Abley, and I want to thank her for her quick response I had asked about the available funds for demolition. Between 2016, 17, and 18, we have $259,061.51 left in the account for demolition. And that's not on top of what they put in for this year. Also, as Mr. Donahue had mentioned, we did receive a petition, and I've received several complaints on this establishment down in the plot, and I forwarded those to the Licensing and Inspections Department. But there still is a major issue. So I appreciate the neighbors getting together and putting this petition, and hopefully something can come of this and some kind of resolution, because these people that live down here are suffering with noise and a lot of other things that are detailed in the petition. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahan. And I only have one update for today. A couple weeks ago, we had an issue with some misleading signage for some bridges from South Side going into West Side. Since that time, Mr. Potius and DPW have taken care of it. They've moved signs in a more appropriate place and then have labeled them on which street those signs actually apply to. So again, I want to thank DPW and Mr. Potius for the quick turnaround on that. And that's all I have for this evening.
5B for introduction and ordinance approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license owned by Sri Sai Baba Corporation, doing business as TJ's Beer and Deli, currently in safekeeping with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, formerly used at 1640 Main Street, Dixon City, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 1-8447, for use at 1801, 1803 Pitston Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 1-8505, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, just on the question, I just want to remind everybody that this is, from the beginning of the meeting, we'll have a public hearing on this next week at 5:45. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance creating and establishing special city account number as noted entitled 2018 Capital Budget for receiving and dispersing capital project funds designated in the 2018 Capital Budget.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I had a question this afternoon after reading this legislation from Mr. Bozoni, and I just want to read his response. He said, "The capital budget transfer is purely an accounting function. Out of the $2 million assigned to the approved capital budget for 2018, the city has $1,622,849.86 remaining in an account which continues to be classified as a general fund account. The $377,678.25 was used to settle the litigation on the Linden Street property and to acquire the property. The city tried to open a capital budget fund mid-year, but for whatever reason, the accounting system would not allow them to open up a separate fund. They're going to revisit the matter at the beginning of the year, but in the interim, they're moving those dollars to this special city's account to avoid inclusion in the general fund." Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate, excuse me, other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a Brownfields Assessment Coalition Memorandum of Agreement between the County of Lackawanna, Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority, and the City of Scranton regarding the pending submission of an industrial sites reuse program grant for the former RSM property site, Wyoming Avenue and Linden Street, Scranton, PA.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I also asked Mr. Bozoni about this project, and I think this will answer Mrs. Schumacher's questions. The prospective cost of remediation is estimated at $448,000. The 25% match is $112,000, which would be the city's responsibility. The ISRP remediation grant will be sought by the county in partnership with the city. The initial plan, according to Mr. Bozoni, was to use part of the $400,000 Keystone Communities Grant allocated to Scranton Tomorrow for remediation. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania would not allow Scranton Tomorrow to assign any of those dollars to remediation. Those dollars are for park improvements only, as well as the approximate $35,000 received from the Scranton Family Estate. The city recently received notification of a $50,000 grant from the state specifically to offset those costs of remediation. Notice was recently provided by Larry West, Chief of Staff for Senator Blake, and the city's working on the formal grant application. Therefore, the sources of funds for the project would be as follows. $336,000 would come from the Brownfields grant remediation. $50,000 would come from the Keystone Community Grant. $62,000 from the general fund allocation from the 2019 budget, which is going to be put in there. $400,000 from the Keystone Communities Grant, Scranton Tomorrow Construction and Improvements. And then $35,000 from the Scranton Family Estate for park improvements, and that's for a total of $883,000. Mr. Bozoni said that he does not expect the park improvements will amount to $435,000, since the concept is basically for green space, but they do not have a design yet and therefore a cost estimate. So he believes, worst case, the budget commitment to the project without a grant offset is $62,000. And then he did attach a memo. So the timeline, it looks like they're looking at a spring 2020 green space park grand opening after all is said and done. So, and I can provide you with the documentation on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 32, 2018, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the City of Scranton Police Department, and if successful, a grant agreement, and accept the funds related thereto through the BJA-FY-18 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program, local solicitation in the amount of $21,053.
You've heard reading by title on Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second. On the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the council number 28, 2018, amending file of the council number 125, 2017, and ordinance entitled General City Operating Budget 2018 by transferring $50,000 from account number as noted, non-departmental expenditures, OPEB Trust Fund, to account number as noted, non-departmental expenditures, Shade Tree Commission, to provide funding for additional tree maintenance costs and the preparation of a basic plan on how to deploy additional trees in the downtown section of the city.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. When Mr. Bozoni was in the caucus last week, I asked for the tree planting map from Mr. Santoli, and we did see, we did get that from him. So we do have that if anybody's interested. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the council number 29, 2018, acknowledging the adoption by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania of the Pennsylvania Fireworks Law, Act 43 of 2017, acknowledging that the fireworks law prohibits the igniting or discharge of consumer fireworks on public or private property without the express permission of the owner, providing that the City of Scranton does not grant permission for anyone to ignite or discharge consumer fireworks on the streets or sidewalks of the City of Scranton or property owned by the City of Scranton, including, without limitation, all of the city-owned parks and public buildings, directing that the City of Scranton provide certified copies of the ordinance to all magisterial district judges within the city, providing for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect in accordance with Pennsylvania law.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, file of the council number 30, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute a deed of easement and right of way between the City of Scranton and the Pennsylvania American Water Company, granting to the Pennsylvania American Water Company the easement, right of way, and rights as are set forth below, with respect to the property which deed of easement and right of way are attached heretofu as Exhibit A.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, file of the council number 31, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a permanent easement agreement and temporary construction easement between the City of Scranton and Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority for real estate owned by the City of Scranton, as more fully described in Exhibit A attached heretofu.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no more further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one thing, Mr. Perry, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I totally forgot.
Absolutely.
And I don't want this very nice woman that called me this week to think I forgot about her. Mrs. Reed, if we could send a letter, this woman had called me, and she lives down on Dixon Avenue in Green Ridge, and she has some serious complaints about the Electric City Academy, which is the school down there on Dixon Avenue. She's complaining that students who were She's complaining that students who are coming to school and then leaving the school are leaving trash in her yard, loitering, cursing, a lot of other things that I can't even say at this meeting. So if we could send a letter to the superintendent of the Scranton School District and copy, we'll have to find out who's in charge of the Electric City Academy, and just detail these concerns on behalf of this woman, and then if we could request that they have a teacher outside in the morning and after school, or a security guard or something, because other neighbors in that area are complaining as well. Thank you. I'm sorry for the...
No, that's okay. Is there any other business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned.